Okay, we ready now? Okay, good evening and welcome to the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission, February 12, 2018. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and next up is a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Hernandez is, well, we're trying to telecommunicate with him, so we'll see how that ends up. Commissioner Reddick?
I'm here.
Commissioner Polgar?
Here.
Vice Chair Benjamin?
Here.
And Chair Holt?
Here.
All four are present.
Next item is the approval of minutes. We have minutes from January 8th and minutes from January 22nd.
Just a note, a note from staff about the January 8th minutes. We're just looking for feedback from Chair and Vice Chair because you were both present, and if there's corrections to make, we will make them, and then we'll just file them because we won't be able to have a quorum.
So, yeah, I mean, in general, I thought they were, they were fine. I was going to ask you how we dealt with that, how we would have a quorum with only two of us. I thought maybe drawing straws or something to achieve a quorum, but whatever you wanted to do was great. I know that in the summary of public comment, maybe it was, it's not necessary. I know that Mr. Laranis provided some pictures and Mr. Olin provided some comments that suggested that the bathrooms weren't accessible, and it might be that the notes should reflect that. And on the Planning Commission discussion, funding source is indeed not a concern, so I was comfortable with that. And I appreciate that point. On the Cabrio, on the chapel church, actually, that was fine. That was my only comment. Yeah, only the bathrooms comment.
Okay.
So, no motion, huh?
So, they look fine to me, so that's...
Thank you.
Okay. So, for January 22nd, we do have our new commissioners on there. Do I have a motion?
Move.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to public comment. This is the time of the meeting that the public can make comments on items not on the agenda. So, if anybody's interested in making general public comments, feel free to fill out a green card, get them to me. I have one green card here, and that's Jerry Steinberg. Is the, is the mic on? Okay, just a second. We have to get it on mic for the, for the home audience.
So, you're, now you're live and powerful.
Thank you. What this is, is, there was a request at the last meeting for additional information. Rick had said if you had any information to submit it, and what it really concerned was, in the 1950s, 1990s, a number of people moved into the area on Silver Terrace and Highland. And at that time, there was a obvious, it was a 92 circulation element which was in force, and which had planned on putting an entryway where for signal on Bayview, which was part of Beachwood. Well, obviously, that fell apart, and so then the backup situation turned out to be kind of a hassle between the neighbors on Terrace or Grandview and on Silver. And the way it is now, no idea how the plan got set up. The engineers put it together. There was, when the agreement was made, settlement agreement, there was never any plan of what was going to happen, and we have documentation for that. But tonight, what I wanted to address was, I had contacted all the people involved, Half Moon Bay, contacted Caltrans, contacted the San Mateo Transit Authority. No one has any idea or any documentation of why there's a barrier on Silver Avenue. There's a lot of tales around, but no one really, there isn't any basis for that to be there, there in writing. And so, what I wanted to do was submit that. I've submitted that to the city engineer, as you can see on the cover letter, and I had been in contact with Caltrans, and there, the, the plan that was put together by Mark Thomas was turned down in 2007, and I've included that. There was some information I had passed out for the last meeting. There's a letter from Caltrans denying the intersection. There are new people, it's pretty hard to tell what's going to happen in the future, but it needs to be addressed, the idea of opening up Silver. And what I've done is I've also attached a sketch from the drawings that were done in 2005, and you'll see, I wondered whether, on Silver, when Pepper, the construction company, when they were putting the streets in, whether they really had some other ideas. You'll see there's a large space available yet, which would provide for a pretty easy right turn in. So, that was the information that I had promised Rick that I would submit tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Not seeing any. We closed the public comment period, and we'll move into the public hearing items. Our first item, our only item, is the planned building at 2801 Champs-Elysees Boulevard.
Scott's going to present this item in just a moment. I just wanted to make a note and apologize to the commission. We don't have a hard copy of the presentation for you, and we weren't able to get the screens running, so you're going to need to flip around in your chair. We're trying this room layout because of feedback we've had from participants here who've come and not had enough space, and so we're trying to give community more space, but we realized this is compromising for the Planning Commission. And then another reminder for everybody to speak into the microphone, really, really close. And then you also have some additional materials that were prepared for you tonight. One is revision to the resolution with regards to a couple of the findings and conditions of approval, as well as a memo from Scott and me to you with responses to comments that we've received from Vice Chair Benjamin and Commissioner Reddick. And with that, we'll turn it over and get the staff presentation going.
Thanks, Jill, and Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. With that, we'll go ahead and get started. This is a, closer. This is a project that was last reviewed by the Planning Commission back in August, August 14th of 2018. And at that meeting, the, the commission was supportive of the project, but had some concerns about our, some local coastal land use policies and whether or not the project was in conformance with, with the specific policies. Since that time, staff did propose a, or we brought some, several local coastal land use amendments through the Planning Commission, City Council, and onto the Coastal Commission, which was eventually adopted. Now, the project, we are able to make the findings and moving forward with the project. The permits that were, are requested, coastal development permit and architectural review, which includes a 3,315 square foot house, which includes a attached two-car garage, and associated landscape improvements and stormwater management improvements. The site was posted several weeks ago, as required by our code, and notices were sent out to the neighbors within 300 feet of the site, and a notice was published in the newspaper. The site itself is a zone planned unit development, and it's on the eastern side of the cul-de-sac that was recently constructed on the south side of Champs-Elysees Boulevard. The Pullman drainage feature runs along the north side of the property, and the neighborhood to the north is partially developed with predominantly two-story houses. The Stalaski Gonzales subdivision improvements are currently under construction to the east on the south side of Pullman Avenue with a new cul-de-sac to be constructed soon. Some key points for the Planning Commission to consider: biological resource assessment, design compatibility, zoning code, drainage, and grading subdivision improvements, and adequacy of the previously adopted SEQA document. So, back in 2011, a biological resource assessment was included with the initial study mitigated negative declaration that was adopted with the tentative parcel map. And more recently, we had the biologist update that report to verify, you know, what it, what's happened since 2011. And the biological consultant concluded that the mitigation measures that were adopted with the parcel map are still pertinent to today, and with those mitigation measures, no significant impact would be created by the project. Okay, the proposed house itself, notice that it is a fairly small footprint in relation to the rest of the property. Here's the, the west elevation facing the cul-de-sac, and notice the prominence of the, the large front porch and that the garage is set in, minor differences in siding and color and roof elements as shown. Here's the elevation to the east facing Highway 1, and notice the rock base has been extended to all sides. That is one thing that's called out in our design guidelines, so they're in conformance with that. Here are the north and south elevations, and again, the large porch that wraps around the house, you know, creating an inviting outdoor element. And exterior color and material sample. And then here's the landscape plan, which the biologist also reviewed to verify that no invasive plants or otherwise harmful new plants would be introduced to the site. And the city's standard practice, as required by our code, is to require a split rail fence along the riparian buffer edge, and we have added a condition of approval requiring the construction of the split rail fence along the 30-foot buffer. The plant list itself, one concern came up with the Japanese maples that were selected for the plant palette, and that, you know, if it turns out those don't make it because of the salt or the wind that the applicant worked with staff on, you know, coming up with an appropriate replacement species. Additionally, there was a little bit of concern about the redwood tree and the, the closeness to the footprint, and we have asked that, you know, some additional separation from the footprint, you know, be included to, when planting the redwood tree. Preliminary and grading and drainage plan, engineering staff did review this, and we did, the additional documents that were provided to the commission did include two additional conditions of approval related to stormwater management, so we encourage the commission to take a look at those. Staff is confident that the design of the drainage and improvements will be in conformance with the stormwater management and will not alter the drainage patterns that exist within the vicinity. Now, as far as the, the initial study, as I mentioned earlier, the, you know, staff did review the updated biological report, and no, no adverse significant impacts on the environment are, you know, projected from, you know, based off of the mitigation measures that were included before. And, let's see, the parcel map, so this was recorded back in 2015, and it did include a building, building envelope in which the project does conform with. Now, back in August, story poles were installed in conformance with the city's story pole policy, and here are some photographs from back in August. A photo documentation was also provided by the applicant that had, you know, more pictures than just this, and, you know, just to show that they were in conformance with the, the policy for story poles. In summary, the, the project conforms to the adopted development standards for the planned development district and the subdivision, and the house is well-designed in compliance with the residential design guidelines. Project conforms to the coastal and visual resource sections of the zoning ordinance. Mitigation measures associated with the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration are appropriate for the site. We didn't receive any correspondence from the surrounding neighbors. Staff is supportive of the project, and we recommend that the Planning Commission provide the applicant an opportunity to speak and take comment, public comment, evaluate any concerns that are brought up, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. So, with that, are there any questions of staff from the commissioners? Clarifying questions on that?
Just one. So, are there any recommendations in the staff, are there any alter, what am I looking for? Any modifications in the staff recommendation for findings, or are the findings that came in the packet originally the ones that you're asking for? I just want to be able to identify what we want to, what you're asking for approval of.
Yes, we, we are recommending some minor changes to the findings themselves, in particular, Policy 7-1 and Policy 7-5. And we have provided some red, redlined and outlined language within the, with the new document that we provided you. And basically, we're, we're providing more evidence to substantiate the findings.
Thank you very much.
Sarah, Steve, any clarifying questions from you?
I was, I was curious about which elements of the visual resources policies you, you mentioned had been tested against, but I think I see that in, in some of your red lines here now, 7-1 and such.
Okay.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. If there are no more questions, we can open up for public comments. I don't have any green cards. If anybody would like to speak, now is your opportunity. Feel free. Please, go ahead and make your comments, and, and if you could, for the record, just fill out a card for us at that.
Hi, I'm Mark Stalaski. I'm one of the owners of the project, and I would first like to start by saying thank you to the staff for all your hard work in getting us through this second phase of our project. I know it was a lot of work, and you guys did a great job. I want to thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, thank you. You guys did great. I, can I answer some questions? If anybody has any questions about the site work, the project from the start, or the intentions of the project, I could answer those questions. If anybody has any questions about the building, design, materials and stuff, we have our builder here, and he could come up and answer any of those questions for you.
Okay, great. I don't think there's any questions at this time, but, yeah.
Okay. I just thank the commission for letting us talk and being here. Thank you guys very much.
Very good. Appreciate you. Appreciate you going through the process here, so, yeah. So with that, we can bring it back to Commission discussion.
So, I thank you for the kind words from the applicant. I know that this was a rather unconventional process that we have all gone through here, and I think we've, I think we've done as good a job as we can with this. I apologize to staff for my late comments that I offered this morning. I'm satisfied with the revisions that I saw. I noticed that presently, the 30-foot riparian buffer appears to have some activity, some construction activity that is inside the buffer area, and I realize that's not part of, you know, that's not an immediate part of what we're doing tonight. We're approving a permit, but I just think it's important for us to go through the process and establish the proper restoration for that, for that area. The buffer needs to be meaningful, it shouldn't be scraped, but I'm sure that'll come up in due course. So, other than that, I really appreciate Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Staloski's efforts to work with us as we revised the local coastal program so that we could move forward with the findings. I have no other, no other comments.
No comments, Sarah?
I was just saying, I appreciated the changes to address the comments regarding the drainage. I think that's important, so, thank you.
Yeah, very good. I just want to mention, I appreciated the questions that came from Commissioner Reddick, very well thought out, asking definitely the right questions. Obviously, this has been an ongoing process and unconventional in that we've had to kind of go in and clean up some work in the past, so, but I think we've gotten it to a good place, so, I'm happy to support the project. I don't have any additional questions and willing to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution PDP 18-004 with the findings as modified in the staff report received tonight with red lines, based on the evidence that's been presented.
If I could, I was going to mention one change. On the Exhibit A, Findings and Evidence, Page 3, just the compliance section under Section 1, the reference to Pullman Ditch, just for consistency, could we change that to the Pullman Water Course?
That would be a welcome change.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes. Congratulations, thank you very much. And, let's see, with that, where's my agenda? Okay, so moving on to, that was our only public hearing item, so now we get to roll into the Director's Report.
And just through the chair, we'd like to acknowledge appreciation for the applicant's comments and that our Assistant City Attorney Heather Minner was critical in preparing the local coastal land use plan amendment, along with staff, and that it's because of her careful hand with this project that we were able to move through so efficiently, and we appreciate the applicant's patience as well and the Planning Commission's direction to us. So, that wrapped up quite well, so thank you. I am going to take advantage of having a little bit of time to plod through a Director's Report, and not too much stuff, but, and if you want to, everybody can take off, or you can listen to this. I'm really good at clearing a rim, so, there you go. All right, so your agenda forecast, your next session is February 26th in two weeks. We're going to try to have the Housing Element Annual Report for you to take a look at. That is something that we pass through both the Planning Commission and the City Council before it is due to the Department of Housing and Community Development. This year, the Housing Element Report is a new format. It's significantly more complicated than it has been in the past, and so we are plugging away on getting that done. If we don't make this date, we'll bring it to you in March, but we would like you to see it because the context is helpful with the land use plan, and your study session on the land use plan, we are going to, we're going to go PD by PD and talk about them generally, and the approach, and then we're going to plug through each one and hopefully get some good input from community as well as you on moving through our revision. March 12th, we are lined up for the Phase 4 of the Carnoustie subdivision area, and I think we're on track for that, to bring that to you. We are trying to have the Pillar Point RV park come that night as well, and I do want to make a note for the record because I think it's, it's not on the agenda, so I'm going to just, I'll be careful about this, but it came up in the minutes and the observations that were made, and there's been things in the newspaper about it as well, and blogging, et cetera. I have inspected the bathrooms. One half is open, and they are bathrooms. I've been in there, they are gender neutral, and they are functioning bathrooms. The other half used to be bathrooms, and it now has an array of things inside of it, a washer and dryer, a computer server for Wi-Fi, and a whole bunch of storage. So, we will talk about this more later, but I just think it's really important when folks are in the newspaper saying that there are no restrooms there. There are restrooms there, and they are open, and they work, so, just a note. Okay, what else? Community Development Director items, last week, we saw 250 Grove. It's a single-family home, a second-story addition. It is within the Coastal Commission Appeals jurisdiction, and so we are waiting out the Community Development Director appeal, and then we will submit the Notice of Final Action to the Coastal Commission. On February 20th, we'll be seeing a second-story addition for a home on Toulouse, which is in the Frenchman's Creek neighborhood. This was an item that I saw a few months ago, and I continued it to a date uncertain, discovering things during the hearing, as you do sometimes, that need to be cleaned up, and so we've been working on that. City Council has adopted the Parks Master Plan. They did that on February 5th, and Scott is thrilled to have gotten to through the gauntlet on that master plan. Soon to follow, we're trying to get that bicycle and pedestrian master plan to you with its SEQA document. It will have a similar process that you saw with the Parks Master Plan. Council is preparing for their retreat on February 26th. That's during the day, so that'll be a very busy day for staff because we're going to be supporting that, and then we're going to see you that night. Council will also be hosting three listening sessions this year. This is part of their priority setting process associated with their budget work. They have two weekend sessions, one will be on March 2nd, the second one will be, which is a Saturday, and then on March 3rd, the Sunday, that will be a Spanish-language session. And Thursday evening, March 7th, will be at Kenyatta Cove. Anyone can come to any of the sessions, there'll be translation available, whichever way you need it to be. I think one's in the Adcock, one is here, and the other's Kenyatta Cove, and we're putting out lots of notifications for this. These were very well-attended last year, and we encourage you to hit one of them if you can. There, it's lots of food for thought. March 26th will be the City Council Priority Session, and that will also be during the day, and that will also be a Planning Commission Meeting Day, so again, we get to scurry from that to an evening with you again. We were trying to, so moving off of Council, back to the Planning Commission, we're trying to offer some training opportunities, and I think three of you were able to make the San Mateo County Training recently, I think January 31st. That was sort of a high-level training. They're going to have a second session focused on housing. I was there, I thought it was a good dip-your-toe-in-the-water kind of session, and it also gave you a chance to talk to other Planning Commissioners from other cities, so I hope that was good. We're trying to get you signed up. Two of you are new Commissioners for the League of California Cities Training. Their website crashed last week, and so we didn't get the job done, and then we tried on Monday, and it was still down, so we contacted them, and then we found out that it was full. So now we've got you both on a waiting list, and we will pursue this very much. Last time this happened, we were able to get some slots, and so it may well work out, but we'll keep you informed, and we apologize, it was unforeseen, obviously, but really a disappointing process, and Joe is really frustrated, he's doing all that for you. And, let's see, that's, that's what I have here. Is there anything you're interested in for staff to be doing or reporting to you about?
I was just curious, going back to the land use plan study session and going through PD by PD, and I know at one point, there's talk about trying to do something more potentially interactive on the website or something like that, to sort of walk people through, or if that's a possibility, or just knowing that not everybody necessarily makes it to the meetings, but still might have comments at some point.
I need to think about what we can actually deliver for that.
Not necessarily request, just curiosity.
Well, I've been wondering about making a short video that just focuses on presenting the material. Having somebody else other than me do it would be great, so, we can, we can figure this out. Been asked to do that by a couple people. I don't know if that's a useful thing. I don't know how to do it interactively, per se, so if you have thoughts on that, you feel free to share those with us.
Yeah, I do, and...
You do?
Oh, I'll get in touch with these separately, in terms of, yeah, something that we could potentially host on there, that I think would be fairly easy to put together.
All right. This is like half the staff, so, just remember.
Understood, understood.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, did you want to talk about the B-PAC?
I did.
You did, okay.
How did I miss that?
Did I miss, did you say it? I'm sorry, maybe...
It's on my notes, and I, thank you.
I didn't know if I heard it.
Yeah, so, Commissioner Demond was the Planning Commissioner who served on the B-PAC. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has 10 members. One of the members is a Parks and Rec Commissioner, and the other is to be a Planning Commissioner. And at your last meeting with, you settled out your Chair and Vice Chair selection, and so now we wanted to let you know that next meeting, we'd like you to be ready to put your hat in the ring if you're willing to take on that role. The B-PAC meets, now they're meeting about every other month. When they, they started out as a committee that was formed to support the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan work, and they were a committee that we, through community development, we were supporting that group. Now that that plan is drafted, their role is more on implementation, and so they are now supported by Public Works, and the city engineer and other folks from that group are bringing projects to them to confirm that they're conforming to policy and other work that we've already done, as well as best practices. And then, we'll be, you know, I still poke into it sometimes, and other staff will be doing that, but the nature of the committee has changed and what they need to do. So, they don't need to meet every month now. They do, I think they're the first Thursday of the month, and they meet in here, in the EOC, and it's a really nice, diverse group. There's a high school student on the committee. The intent was to have a lot of different kinds of input with respect to bicycle and pedestrian transportation, because everybody experiences it differently. So, think about that. We will need one of you, and Commissioner Demond, he was great, and we're going to miss him, but he served, he spent a lot of time doing that. Thank you, Bridget.
Is there a mission statement written up for that group?
There is, and there's bylaws, and maybe, Bridget, can you send those out to the Commission tomorrow? Yeah, we can, we can launch those over to you.
Thank you.
That's a good question, thank you. Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, moving on to Planning Commission Communications. Any communications to report? I've got none.
Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right.
You feel bereft?
I've been with Jerry here.
I know, it's not actually that short. I was about to say, what do you mean laugh? Is it like, all the baggage of history that kind of like, I was like, whoa! But I was very pleased to see his comments because I didn't know enough about, like, I haven't had enough experience to understand what could be requested of it. I also, my binder is missing some information that I need to ask, and so I was like, where is that? I couldn't find it.
Okay, so, if, if, I don't know, okay, so we'll have, so we'll set them up first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
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 Okay.